All right, folks, we're gonna go ahead and start the, this meeting of the Bridgeton City Council. If you would all please rise and join us in the pleasurable lead.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. The clerk will now call the roll.
Mrs. Abram, here, Mr. Fedge.
Here.
Mr. Grimmer.
Here.
Mr. Hein.
Here.
Mr. Norris. Here, Mr. Purcell.
Here.
Mr. Sattell.
Here.
Mr. Sumner.
Here. All right, we have all eight council members here representing us tonight. Our normal city attorneys out this way, so may be welcome. And folks will be here representing us and providing us with legal counsel. We'll down to item D tonight, which is the agenda approval.
Motion seconded.
Motion's made and seconded for agenda approval. Any comments, questions, suggestions, changes? Councilmember Abram?
Yes, on page two, item four, under item four, that should be Grimmer, it's under Abram.
It's under, there's no, it is under me.
Well, it's under Abram for the brief space. Are all those, item three and four actually juries?
No, three's mine.
Just three, under the first commission?
Three is mine, but then juries should be four instead of mine.
Very good. Is it okay with everybody?
Seconded.
Very good. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fedge.
Table streets, sir, number five, item five.
motions made and seconded to table the streets discussion tonight. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. That's all, so. Thank you. Any further comments about the agenda? If not, those in favor of the amended agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. Motion carries. Our agenda is set tonight. Public portion. This is just the opportunity to give the public the opportunity, chance to come forward. It's not part of the public hearing yet, so, so time. Anyone here to address administration or the council? Saying none. We're closed the public portion. Then we want to dine a minute. The approval of the minutes of the March 6, 2019 session.
No approval. Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded for approval of the March 6, 2019 meeting minutes. Councilmember Abram?
Yes, sir. On page three, you see the fourth, under Conference Communications, the fourth paragraph. It said, "Mrs. Abram and others thank the Street and Parks Department." And in Parks should say Police.
I'm sorry, do you want to add?
Okay, fourth paragraph, under Conference Communications, where it says, "Mrs. Abram and others thank the Street and Parks Departments." For all their work during the summer, that should be the Street and Police Department, instead of Parks.
Seconded, I remember her standing there. Okay. Motion's made and seconded to amend the minutes to reflect the scratch parts and put it in Police. Further comments, questions? Those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. Motion carries. Further comments, questions, suggestions, changes to the minutes? Saying none. Those in favor of the amended minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. That motion carries. We are down to announcements. Tonight, we do have three appointments for your consideration tonight. Those were handed out as a handout that are your placement. So, we're considering, like, do you want to do separately? Is everybody okay if we just do them all at once? All at once?
Actually, all at once.
Okay, we have Mike Bailey for design and review. He would be brand-new appointment, replacing Anthony Banks out of Ward Four. John Kepper from Ward Two, as chairman of the streets, and a reappointment to his third and final term. And Ken Dunlop from Ward One, to the Streets Commission, a reappointment, and it would be his third and final term. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. These individuals, I'm sure, will continue. In the case of two of them, they're fine work on streets, and looking forward to having Mr. Bailey help us out on design and review. Councilmember Norris?
Yes, sir. Will Mr. Bailey be notified of the next meeting?
Yes, I'd like to, so we should get something out for him to know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Not a problem. All right, we will recess the regular meeting of the council in order to hold a public hearing on a request for accessory housing for the Zurd St. Louis Metro Baptist Association. Mr. Greig?
You don't have soul of your weekend. So, this is a petition for a text amendment to the B-5L Land and Commercial District. The property is 3859 PP Road. This is the location of St. Louis Metro Baptist Association. It's located on the west side of PP Road, south of Walgreens and west of PP Baptist Church and the Great Baptist Children's Home. St. Louis Metro Residential to the south and west. The current building was built in 2005 after the B-5L district was created in 2004, when the property was re-owned from R4, the current B-5 district. It is essentially a one larcal and commercial district that was created specifically for the St. Louis Metro Baptist populations. It's surrounded by the B2 to the north, R4 residential to the west and south, and then R4A to the east. The only issue, the natural one, in R4A is that R4A allows the children's home that is associated with PP Baptist Church there to the east. The B-5L district is pretty limited in scope. This is the current language. It has a limited number of uses, offices, church, higher education, public parks. It basically serves as a transitional zone between the commercial and St. Louis Rock Road and the residential to the south and west. So, when St. Louis Metro Baptist Association approached city staff about their concept, city staff thought it was reasonable, but they realized that there were going to be some issues we had to address, and that being, limiting any unwanted or unintended future uses if Metro Baptist were maybe to sell the property in the future, and then also to offer as much protection as we could for the residential properties to the west and south. That was kind of one of the main objectives. Not too concerned about impacting Walgreens to the north or PP Baptist Church to the east. There's a large slope to the east of PP Road that kind of offers some physical separation as well. So, that was kind of the goal when, when we worked with the applicant to draft the language. So, staff working with the applicant in order to get all the information about the proposal, and then staff kind of drafted a lot of the language. We did work with Mr. Lee Broker to fine-tune the language. I'll, I'll jump back to this, and then just a little bit. I just wanted to show a few pictures of the site. This is the front of the property, looking across PP Road. But I do have, most of the pictures focus on the adjacent residential. This is looking to the north on the Raymond Avenue. The residential to the left side of the page, and then the St. Louis Metro Baptist property to the right side of the page. You can kind of see the opening. You can see, in the middle, you can see their current building through the trees. And that was one of the items that we, staff, that we also wanted to address in the revised text amendment. We're addressing the landscaping requirements, too. So, what, what we did was really created language that was really specific to what St. Louis Metro Baptist Association was looking to do. And then, as you can see, the five provisions that were added that addressed some of the uses that we wouldn't want to see possibly happen there in the future. So, those were really designed to prevent any future negative impact on adjacent residential uses. And to the size and scope of the operation, also, to not allow to turn something that might become a desirable dislocation. And then also, the landscaping requirements were really strengthened in order to offer some further protection for the residential uses that are adjacent to the south and west, so to reduce any visual impact. So, this would be required at this location. A few additional items with district provisions. Staffing to be compatible with strange zoning land uses. Another item, interest in interest, is currently limited to PP Road in the zoning mandate anyway. In the existing district, there's no access allowed to the Raymond Avenue. Regarding traffic and parking, the proposal as presented would not generate significant traffic. And the parking has already exceeds what the zoning, or the zoning ordinance requires, so park would be sufficient. Another item that came up at planning commissioner was the site plan. I want to point out that I asked the applicants to provide this, just to get a visual. The approval of the site plan would come later through staff, through the building permit process. But just so you could see an idea of what they were thinking of right now, what they're showing, their concept would comply with setbacks and would be added to the rear, to the Raymond Avenue side of the, of the building. Any specific details about the proposal, I'll leave that for the applicant to explain. But is there any questions about the zoning ordinance changes? Please let me know.
Questions, Mr. Greig? Councilmember Sattell?
Yes, I got some very positive results for some of the citizens in that area, as I've talked in the last couple of weeks. Couple of questions was, did they say, I mean, said rooms, but didn't say anything in there, how many rooms or how many beds were gonna be there? Maybe you or them can address that? And whether there might be a fence along the Raymond Avenue side? You know, not just the plants, because of people staying there, there's a patio back there, or they're gonna do a walk between the trees, run up and down? You know, cutting over a foot grip or something like that, or are we gonna put a fence and make sure they go around by walking? Those are the kind of issues.
Regarding the number of rooms, I think I'll let the applicant explain. I think they showed eight or so, but it looked like a little post style. But speaking of, one of the items, since you mentioned it, one of the items that we built into the revised changes was that if you go to B, that it would not be able to operate as a logical settlement, and that any common cooking facility, or there would not be cooking facilities allowed in separate rooms. So, it would return to some sort of multifamily residential in the future. But the details of that, I think I'll leave to the petitioner. Regarding the fence, there's stats in there that we think it could be addressed well through landscaping. If, I mean, we thought a lot of fence, but I think the landscaping would be sufficient. Unless council has strong feelings on, on fence, we can discuss that. I mean, that could, now would be the time to build it into the language if that was what council preferred, but.
Further questions? Up, Mr. Greig. Saying none. Thank you, Zach. We appreciate it. Could the petitioner like to come forward with their presentation? If you would please, just give us your name and address.
My name is Paul Boyer. I'm a civil attorney with ICS, on offset 10820, Sunset Office.
Okay, and you're representing St. Louis Baptist?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Paul Boyer. I'm from, I'm a civil attorney with ICS. I'm here to speak out for St. Louis Metro Baptist Association. With me today also is Jim Brayden. He's the executive director. And Kail also, he's the director of campus and community education. So, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Metro Baptist is excited about their opportunity. They're, as Zach mentioned, and I'll try to cover the same ground. They built their existing facility in 2005, and at that time, they had marked out the area for the planned future expansion in the green space just west of their existing building. So, Metro Baptist is a, is basically a regional office for Southern Baptist churches within the St. Louis area. They're also a resource for Southern Baptist churches across, across the country. So, they built this facility in 2005. The existing facility is a one-story building. It's basically comprised of office space, conference room, and meeting areas. If you've ever been by the, over the day, typically, there's not very many cars and park lots, not a lot of business. One of the main things that they do, though, they've been doing since day one, not only this facility, but other facilities, is community outreach. So, the plan for this development, this building expansion is the community outreach. Currently, what they do is they'll have high school and college-age students come into town either during spring break or during the summer. And then they'll do community outreach within the area, whether it's helping seniors, or cleaning up neighborhoods, or helping other kids. List goes on and on, to do a great deal of good within the community. 2011, for instance, my first thing I did by the tornado of Metro Baptist played a big part in the cleanup. So, the, the, what we're proposing is a building expansion. It's something that is worth, like, single-story expansion. The intent of it is, with this community outreach program, currently what they do is when kids, students come into town, is they're having to house them in the basements of other churches, or put them up in hotels. It tends to be expensive, sometimes it's uncomfortable for the kids. So, what they'd like to do is have a facility where they, the kids can go out, work during the day, and then at night, retire, and sleeping quarters with, there's the culinary kitchen, showers, and then sleeping quarters. The building to sleep up to 100, basically bunkhead-style rooms. There's six rooms, sleeping 16 each, and there's one room that's a family-style room in the facility. So, again, they're not, when these kids show up, they usually show up in large vans, charter buses. So, they're not all driving individual vehicles, but they're typically coming from out of state and traveling groups. They show up. So, that's one reason there's, there's no need to increase the parking. They have more than they have to be parking. And then when they go to their sites during the day, wherever they're doing community outreach, will travel the same way, either through the charter bus or, or, with vans themselves. So, they've been wanting to do this, and again, they've been doing it in community outreach since they've started. Majority of the time, the, the, they travel, usually it's 35, 40, 50 students at a time. There would be a couple of times during the year, maybe it gets up to 100, and that's usually because of 90 to 100, because if they're having, like, some of these Southern Baptist churches, the larger facilities, the Baptist churches down in, like, Texas Way or so forth, when they'll set up a group, it's a large group. And so, but usually those are few and far between. It's usually in 25, 30, 35 students at a time. And then they'll work the garden during the day, and then they will come back in the evenings, and then reverb, and then shower clean up deep, and then go to bed with the next day. So, they usually come on a Saturday, and then they usually leave on a Friday. The second, that facility's also gonna be used as a retreat. So, as I mentioned, the students were coming usually during the summer, spring break in the summer months, and then in the fall and winter, they would use this facility more as a retreat. They would typically stay one night and then two days at the facility, or be a training, training facility for the church as well. So, I will go over the same ground that Zach touched on, I mean, as far as the landscape bumper. The one thing I will mention, they, the St. Louis Metro Baptist Association did send out invites to the immediately voting nine residents around them. And I believe one showed up, and they followed up with three others, and answered the obvious questions, I think, but offered facility, but what their intent is. But to my knowledge, there hasn't been anything, any negative feedback unless at least here somewhere, I haven't heard anything. So, it's been positive feedback, basically answering response, and your proposal, but I haven't heard anything that's concerning yet. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can, in terms of killing.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Questions of council? Councilmember Gore?
Yes, Mr. Gore, thank you for your presentation, and you covered some of the concerns I had. Thank you. Would you buy groceries and things locally?
Yeah, they typically will, yeah. They would get their groceries from the local markets, yeah, where they would, that's one of the things that they included in their ladder. I mean, when these people come into town, they'll typically hit the local stores, local eateries, and so forth.
Okay, good. Thank you. I kind of thought so, but it just, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Norris?
Thank you. Would they be coming, would it be a separate entrance, where these young people would go, you know, or would you come in from the main building?
They, well, there's a, there's a, they could come through the building, there's connect, there's also an entrance on the south side as well.
Yeah, I saw that. I didn't know if.
Yeah, it's on the south side as well. There's actually an entrance from the south and the west side, but on the south side, that's where they'd be hungry.
And I'm sure, having that many young people, they will have chaperones.
Yes.
Because, you know, it's quite a bit, you know, it's a little sensitive neighborhood, you know, it's pretty, when you have 100 people coming in.
The larger would be not the norm, but right there.
You know, but there could be at times, you know, and walking, I don't know if they'd want to walk to some of our fast foods, you know, it's kind of a busy, I don't know unless they're gonna be pretty much cloistered into the.
I know, I've been told, I guess they're pretty tired by the end of the day.
All their kids, if they got an excuse to get out.
Sure, yeah, the intent is that they would, they are chaperones, yeah, they would.
Because, you know, if they'd be out on the patio or anything like that, you know, they're pretty close to the neighbors if they're good talking and, you know, and things like that. So, I do hope that, I guess you did tell the neighbors it could be up to 100 people? Did they explain that? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Fedge?
Sir, the last sentence in the minutes of your planning zoning meeting said that you could sleep 100 people. Is that what the expansion will allow?
Yes.
How many do you do now?
Thank you. Well, right now, they're distributed, like, today, there's, there's kids on the spring break, and they're distributed throughout St. Louis. So, right now, nobody stays at the.
Nobody stays, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Purcell?
Thank you. Yeah, just to echo the comments there, Mr. Grimmer, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate your presentation. I think this sounds great, giving them an opportunity to, you know, kind of stay as a group in one place, and if they, you know, if they're here locally and, you know, shopping locally, getting their groceries, participating in activities locally, I think that's great, obviously, for our city. The one question that I have, and I think this has already been addressed, if I remember correctly from, you know, reading everything, but I guess I'm gonna go ahead and ask, just so it's kind of out there on the record, if you will. You'd mentioned in your presentation earlier that most of these people come during summer and during, say, spring break, around now. Is there a plan for the building for the rest of the year, say, from September to February?
If that, that is the intent, dual purpose, it would be a retreat and a training area for, for the Southern Baptist church. So, they would, as far as a retreat, it would be, again, it would be typically over one night, two days, and one night, the typical thing. I think training probably follow the same, yeah, the training.
Yeah, I could share a little broader of that. Our office services 140 Southern Baptist churches in St. Louis City, St. Louis County, St. Charles County. So, that's our primary responsibility and privilege to work with them, so they could host retreats or training centers, training events at this facility, and spend the night, or one or two nights for a retreat, kind of thing. The other thing is, every area of the whole nation is organized through Southern Baptist conventions. So, we partner with Franklin Association, Jefferson, Out West, Lincoln, across the river, two associations. So, when you take in those churches, it's around 300 churches. So, we, we feel like those churches would be the natural churches to hold retreats or training events at this facility outside of the volunteers that'll come from outside of state.
Thanks, and so, it just, I guess my, my only concern, and just, I guess, so you could elaborate on this, it doesn't sound like that the building's gonna just be sitting empty or not used, you know, for, for the non-summer times, if you will.
Right, so our office, we have a staff of nine, will continue to occupy the, you know, the current existing building throughout, you know, coming years. Our, our organization, by the way, you might enjoy hearing this, I would imagine, we're the oldest organization in Bridgeton. We're 203 years old. St. Louis Metro is. We've only been in three locations. That's now O'Grand, and then Olive, and then now Bridgeton for the last 13 years. So, so our, our office staff, as well as our churches, PP Baptist Church, right across the street, of course, is one of our churches. So, I think they're 210 years old. I say those numbers to say, we've been around that long. It is our prayer to be along, around forever. So, yes, we'll continue to use them.
Thank you. I appreciate your time, and we'll afford to have you.
Further comments or questions? Jim, I have one for you.
Sure.
Is the facility designated, because you mentioned, like, coming in with crews, like, natural disasters, which we appreciate that they come up. So, like, the Billy Graham Group, they have people that come in.
Yes.
Is that affiliated with you all, that you would allow them to utilize, since they're somewhat similar, or other religious denominations? If they're coming in for that type of work, like, for a natural disaster, to work in the area, would you consider housing them? Or is that under consideration as well?
No, absolutely. Natural disasters, Billy Graham's organization, Southern Baptist, other, other faiths, Lutheran Methodist, there's other faiths that have good disaster relief response units. We all come together and partner. Typically, Southern Baptist would be the hub of that, not always. Sometimes we'll partner with others, but absolutely, yeah. If there's another tornado or something comes through our city, our churches, as well as this facility, will be open to help care for the community.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sattell?
Yeah, so you say, different individuals coming from different parts of the country, were you going to, going to allow, like, different churches, like, they cut through Missouri on the way to California, be able to spend a night here, as a, as a one-night stay and get back on the road again? Is that something you're gonna allow to? I know the Southern churches are gracious to do that, I.
We've not talked about that, but the additional family unit that Paul mentioned, we do see as a place for, like, pastors who come into Lambert Airport that typically may stay at a hotel, or need a night's stay, right, the night before they fly out the next morning. That kind of activity would happen in the family area. But we've not really talked about the broader, the, or the broader issue you just spoke of going through, you know, St. Louis at the stopping point.
I know, some of them work it out as a way to stop, not have to pay to stay at a motel somewhere, because it's there, and if a family is gonna gather.
If there are sister churches, or someone that knows us, we certainly would probably say yes. The language that has been drafted by Zach in planning the zoning, I think, is that no one can stay longer than 10 days. So, we definitely would honor that, but again, most, most of these stays will be one to five nights.
I kind of saw that you didn't increase any parking, yet you could possibly have a parking issue if there was 100 people coming there, and they, some. Do you have a reciprocal arrangement with the children's home next door? So, if you needed to have extra, I wish they got plenty of parking, unless it's maybe the strawberry festival. And then those people might be staying at your place. I'm just looking, some of those come from, by the ways to get here.
So, when we had the disaster back on Good Friday a few years ago, we did need PP's parking lot, because big trucks come in, or trailers, and all the equipment to help take care of the needs of the community. So, in that case, we would partner with PP and parking lots and such. But for everything, our intended use for this extension, we have plenty of parking. In fact, planning zoning has asked us to stripe a couple areas for, like, buses or vans. Right now, all of our parking is striped for individual cars, so we're gonna definitely do that. But we feel our parking is very adequate to what our main line reasons for this extension.
And getting back to my earlier question, you see no problem with the, the life fence and not having people come through there over there? And I just, you have Walgreens right next door, so more than likely, people, if they need prescriptions or something quick, they can go to Wal, Walgreens for a leave or something like that, if it's a headache.
We would certainly honor whatever you'd like, but I'll share our philosophy is, we want to mingle and be a part of the community. We don't want to segregate. We don't want to be separate from. We would love our neighbors to feel welcome to come over, to do whatever, or us visit with them. So, I personally would love for us just to stay open as a part of the community. If the neighbors and others feel like that would enhance, you know, the neighborhood.
Well, I'd really give the plants a chance. I mean, more for horticulture, so I think I'd rather see the plants, you know, and I love that you have like, evergreens every 20 feet, you know, you're really making a detail. So, now, it's, you know, taking advantage of the plant material, might be your screen. Yet in the wintertime, you can still see through it, see the home and stuff like that, or through their bark. All right, no problem. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Norris?
I just have one more, you know, I know I hate to harp on the, at a later time, you've got the patio, and I know kids, you're gonna be tired, but, I mean, kids run, kids are kids. At time, if they're gathering out on that patio, and it becomes an issue, would you consider putting maybe a, just a privacy, like, fence around your patio where they can gather? I know you want to be part of, but, you know, if there would be an issue later on. I said, you know, I know you want to, but.
Would you include, like, anything like that? I'll say a couple of these. One is the architect, which we did kind of put up a, a brick barrier around that. But again, it was a little too intrusive, or it looked.
You know, one of the white patio-type fences would be nice. I'm just saying, you know, you're off of a very busy road, and they do have some walkers and things like that. So, I'm just looking at possibly a safety, security for you, and just a little privacy for these young people, too, that they would maybe want to share, but. privacy for these young people, too, that they would maybe wanna share, but, just, just bringing that to you, and if you, if there would be some issues, we might, if you would consider that, okay.
Sure. Councilmember Ray.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, I think that Zach did a very good job on putting together what we would be concerned with as far as, you know, housing homeless or, or other uses, so, I think that, um, most of any concerns we would've had, I think he covered in here, so, um, I just wanna say he did a good job on this, so-
He did.
And I think their plans are very, um, very good with what they have.
Further comments or questions from council? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it, well now, the floor up to those in support, in supportive of the proposal. Okay, anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? It's a formality, folks, we have to go through it. All right, seeing that, we're closed public hearing, and we'll move on to the rest of the agenda tonight, thank you, and the rest of the agenda, the first item, Councilmember Ray, is on Bill sixty-two hundred.
Move for bill number, first reading, bill number six-two-zero-zero.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded for first reading of Bill sixty-two hundred, Councilmember Ray.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number nineteen dash BZ dash zero-one, which amends a Bridgeton zoning ordinance, appendix four dash one, Plan Commercial District two-five-L, St. Louis Metro Baptist Association, Phoebe Road at St. Charles Rock Road, Plan Commercial District, to allow accessory housing to sell to the temporary stay of persons associated with educational, religious, charitable, or service institutions, as a permitted land use in increased maximum building area from twelve thousand five hundred to sixteen thousand gross per feet. Move to table.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded for tabling of Bill sixty-two hundred, those in favor, signify the say no.
Aye.
Opposed, standing, that motion carries, that just means it comes up at the next meeting. Councilmember Grimmer, Bill sixty-two oh-one.
Move for first reading of Bill number sixty-two oh-one, second.
Motion's made in seconded for second, the first reading is to use the Bill sixty-two zero-one, Councilmember Grimmer.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached tier-two between the City of Bridgeton and St. Louis County, on behalf of the St. Louis County Department of Police, wherein the City of Bridgeton agrees to assign one detective to serve on the St. Louis County Multi-Jurisdictional Task Force. Move to, uh, table, Bill number sixty-two oh-one, second.
Motion's made in seconded for tabling of Bill sixty-two oh-one, those in favor, signify the say no.
Aye.
I'd like to ask for chief if he had, he may want a second reading, would you mind?
Uh, well, still, we gotta take it off the table anyway, yeah, we can do a second reading.
All right, moves to, uh-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, the motion on tables to table, the motion on floors to table, and I ask to take it back off the table.
All right.
So we first have to vote on the table and motion.
Can we, uh, scrap, pop for Donnie first, other than maybe the change?
Move to it, Mike, on the second, and we'll bring it off the table, and we'll talk about it.
All right, so the motion is to table, those in favor, signify the say no.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
You have the clerk call the roll.
Excuse me, can we, point of order?
Why don't we just remove the table?
Councilmember Grimmer?
I can bring it back off the table.
Yes, you can bring it back off.
That's what I was gonna do first, so that's, 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 just so you understand what's happening here.
It's not over for time.
I was gonna bring it off the table.
What?
I was gonna bring it off the table, even though we moved the table, and I was gonna bring it back off, so we could read it again.
Why don't, let's just kill the table and move on. Why don't you kill the second, it won't even be have a second.
What's the most exciting?
The motion right now is to table, the vote was indecisive, so we're asking for a roll call or table, we have the priority to bring it back off the table tonight.
Okay, very well.
Does everybody understand?
I think we couldn't just vote against it, and it's not table.
Right, that's true, too.
Well, that's why I voted against it.
Okay, all right, okay.
But, let's do it, cause there was a split vote.
Okay.
Mrs. Abram?
Nay.
Mr. Fedge?
Nay.
Mr. Grimmer?
Nay.
Mr. Hine?
Nay.
Mrs. Norris?
Nay.
Mr. Purcell?
Nay.
Mr. Satell?
Nay.
Mr. Zimmer?
Nay.
Okay, by your vote, eight to nothing, we have defeated the motion to table, now we'll recognize Councilmember Grimmer again for motion for first reading.
Okay.
Second, second vote.
Okay. Move for, oh, no, okay, I'll put it to the chief then, okay, move for a second reading, move for second reading of Bill number sixty-two oh-one, second.
Motion's made in seconded for second reading of Bill sixty-two oh-one, those in favor, signify the say no.
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries, now you can take up.
Okay, what I'd like to do is, actually, I had a brief conversation with the chief about this this afternoon, just to clarify exactly what was going on and why this was being asked of us, so, I would ask that the council's indulgence in allowing the chief to make a just brief explanation of this, so we understand it thoroughly.
Council okay with that?
Wasn't it all in the reading, we've read about it.
Oh, okay.
We've read, we've read it already.
Okay, I, you know, I had questions on basically what was being asked, and why it was being asked, and, and it was just a very brief explanation, if we don't need to know, I, I kinda found it interesting, but, you know, that's, that's just new.
Councilmember Ray.
Shouldn't he just read it the second time, and then we have discussion?
That's second reading, it's up for third reading right now.
No, we'll do three.
Councilmember Purcell.
Yeah, Ms. Abrams is correct, uh, it does need to be read the second time, and then we can have a discussion.
All right, very well, all right, second reading, move for second reading, it's been approved, I'll read it again.
For third reading.
No.
Second, second.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached tier-two between the City of Bridgeton and St. Louis County, on behalf of St. Louis County Department of Police, wherein the City of Bridgeton agrees to assign one detective to serve in the city, uh, St. Louis County Multi-Jurisdictional Task Force. Move that Bill number sixty-two oh-one become ordinance number-
Nineteen dash three.
Say it.
All right.
Now I have to chief. You still control the tables.
Sorry, we're trying to clarify things here, got a little confused.
Yes, we did.
All right, so we first read and second read, we're down to-
Discussion?
Discussion.
And I would ask the, the chief to offer a brief explanation of why this is happening, and what we're obligated to, and so forth, and also, there are some interesting things on compensation and things like that, that I thought the council may wanna know.
But other councilmembers said they'd already read the packet, so-
Very well.
Unless the council wants further discussion from the chief, we will just move forward.
That's fine, all right, very well.
All right, so we're down to third reading, any further discussion prior to reading? Councilmember Satell.
So, is there a rush to pass it as a second thing tonight, or is it later on? I'm just, we're trying to get to that point, that we can kinda ask the question for the chief to be-
We're beyond that point.
Yes. And we don't do three.
Councilmember Purcell.
I would move to suspend council rules and allow the chief to explain a little bit more in detail what, uh, what this is, uh, gonna entail, and maybe why we need to pass this tonight.
Second. Motion's made in seconded to suspend council rules, to enable the police chief to address council, those in favor, signify the say no.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, chief, would you care to elaborate a little bit on this?
I, I will, and I apologize for not making it clear, uh, for a second reading tonight, if at all possible, we're a little bit behind on this paper, and in order for reimbursement to the city, and normally this would be handled under the memo due, we passed an ordinance with this task force, it was very first started in twenty fifteen, but since this is a new grant, data loss for the ordinance, so, we can't give reimbursement until we arrive and sign the package, and we have the motivation for asking for a second.
Okay, good, thank you.
Further questions, and the chief? Saying no, we are now back to third and final reading.
No, actually, we did that.
We did third reading?
Yeah, they did nineteen oh-three.
Nineteen oh-three? Did we, did we do a roll call?
We didn't vote the vote yet.
Right, that's where I was headed.
Oh.
Clearing the call of the rolls.
Mr. Fedge?
Aye.
Mr. Grimmer?
Aye.
Mr. Hine?
Aye.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Purcell?
Aye.
Mr. Satell?
Aye.
Mr. Zimmer?
Aye.
Mrs. Abram?
Aye.
By your vote, eight to nothing, you put Bill sixty-two oh-one becoming ordinance number-
Nineteen oh-three.
Nineteen oh-three, thank you all for surviving that. All right, streets we've tabled, we do need to, uh, go into a closed session tonight, if you wanna do the attorney's reports and get everything else on the way, let's do that first, Matt, do you have anything?
Nothing to report there.
Thank you, council communications, councilmember Norris.
Should I move along? No, 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 I left something, uh, I just did a little, I, I, ex officio at Design Review last night, E&amp;R O D R S, uh, was approved for their building, um, I do wanna say that it's gonna be a very nice, modern-looking building, very sleek, so, uh, it was a great presentation, so, it's working its way through the, um, our system, um, I just wanted to remind everyone of the Kiwanis Breakfast, April fourteenth, seven-thirty to twelve-thirty, and I do have tickets, and, um, remember to vote, and good luck to everyone that is running, April the second, two thousand and nineteen, that's all.
Very good, councilmember Ray.
Um, I, I don't know if this is true or not, but, uh, I heard there are mirrors that's in line at the fish fry, uh, at Holy Spirit.
I won a contest on.
Well, yeah, what he did is, he won third place at Holy Spirit, so he gets to go first in line when he comes here, so-
That's the best line.
And that's the best way to do it, so you won a good prize, so that's why.
I need to put that one.
Um, other than that, I don't think I have anything else today.
Very good, councilmember Aye.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just a couple things, uh, we all got the flyers for the entry farm for the Fourth of July parade, and, uh, I just wanna say that being the ex officio to that committee, one of the most difficult things that the committee, uh, has to accomplish is getting, getting the entrance, getting the people in the parade, so, if you know anybody that wants to participate, please, uh, let them know early and, and get them an application form, uh, and this will be the second year for the costume contest, um, being ex officio to the Beautification Commission, um, the plant giveaway, the, the spring plant giveaway is gonna be April twentieth, um, up at the rec center, eight-thirty AM, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Fedge.
Kathy.
Sir? Very good, councilmember Grimmer?
Just to announce that the Historical Commission will have another, and they're featured speaker series, it will be next Thursday, excuse me, next Wednesday night, I believe, uh, and the speakers, the subject will be the history of Phoebe Cemetery, presented by an official of the cemetery, it's very interesting, there's a lot of history at that cemetery, and, uh, we're fortunate to have somebody, a very interesting thing, I'm sure there'll be a pretty good crowd, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Purcell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, first, just wanna thank everybody for being here, appreciate you guys coming out, anybody that may watch, uh, on the world wide web later, thanks for tuning into your local government, we appreciate it, um, just, the only announcement I have is that next week, anybody that may be watching, uh, is, next week is the Ward Two meeting, uh, and so we hopefully have a nice attendance there, and, uh, can talk about some of the issues affecting Ward Two and the city, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Satell.
Yes, lucky for Will Sharr, I just wanna wish everybody the best on election day, including myself, and, and the mayor, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Zimmer?
I have nothing, thank you.
Moving on to the reports of the various departments, we'll start with Public Works, where we have Mr. Peterson with us, seated.
I do have something tonight, uh, this Saturday is our annual trash bash, Bridgeton's been participating in, and, uh, it's, like I said, it's this Saturday, um, it's the Confluence Trash Bash, we'll be picking up trash along the Target Site, entrance off here at National Bridge, and behind the Machina's Hall, we've been doing that for probably about six years now, we'll be meeting down in the patio area, about, uh, eight to nine o'clock, the registration will start about nine, and end at noon, so if you're anybody participating in that, they can stop by this Saturday.
Okay, councilmember Norris?
Is that the only area you would take care of?
That, we typically don't have a lot of people, so that is, we have just enough people to do that whole area.
Oh, okay.
There is, this is a, uh, all the Confluence, it's, it's over Creek Core Park, Chain of Rocks, is, is a pretty good-sized event, but, uh, our Bridgeton site, that's the area we do.
How did you advertise for that? Did you, did you get anything from the high school or anything with community service that they have to do?
I don't, I do not, it is online, um, and you can, you can register online also.
I just noticed that, you know, because of all the winds and the storm, there's a lot of blow trash through the neighborhood, I mean, on the rock road, you know, I-
This is specifically for any trash that would get into the creeks and, and off in the river, it's the Confluence.
Okay, I just wanted you to, like, maybe spread out, okay, thank you.
No problem.
I threw you off, I'm sorry.
Apologize for the confusion, uh, tomorrow the flash is gonna be a half-staff, uh, my earlier governor was Specialist Jackson, Jim, guy in the way, and, uh, if you hear anything, we had several vehicles, tires slashed, uh, on Nottingham and Breaking Circle over the weekend, we don't have very much to go on, we're looking for information, so if anybody hears anything, please let us know.
Well, Dan, Brendan, parts? Do have an update on the Bridgeway Park construction, they were able to reconvene work, uh, last week, only had a break in the weather, it's how we were formed up, um, they completed concrete for all the pavilions, uh, as of last, early last week, and they did some regrading and marked the trail, um, this weekend, uh, paving will start tomorrow, they're supposed to start today, but with a little bit of rain we got last night, they were comfortable running that machinery out, so that is scheduled to take two to three days, um, and then as soon as, uh, they're done with that, uh, the landscape will begin to handle the seed and the sod, so, we're working pretty much every day, they've got guys out there, uh, working on it, so, happy to see you back to it.
Glad to see progress being made on Bridgeway, it's been a while, Margaret, you'll hear a lot of activity up there. Mr. Buckout?
I don't have anything to say.
Very good, I don't have a report, other than you encourage everyone to go out and vote on April the second, uh, with that, I need a motion vote to go into closed session.
Yes, a motion, uh, to go to closed session, uh, pursuant to section six-one, zero-point-zero-two-one, um, more specifically, uh, this evening regarding, um, personnel matters, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting information about an employee will be discussed, uh, recorded pursuant to section six-ten dot oh-two-one.
Nice set of glasses there, too, Eddie.
Second, second.
Second, seconded, to go to any of closed sessions, for personnel issues, political